Go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jack, would you?
Yes.
For the respect that you do, you're the president of our country, we're always going to be able to listen to your work and have a statement, and kind of maybe be impressed here, and beautiful out there, and I think just something to be impressed by this town is that everyone here in the residents, the residents, and it's been things good for us to enjoy your presence, and what we just know that we are always accountable, if you are the king and king and the lord and lord, then we choose to respect.
The meeting's called together to discuss the development of our fire district, and our town and our township, uh, so that'll be the discussion around this evening. We need you've got the series of questions and some lead in from Ruben, whatever you'd like to take on.
Um, well, I don't know if there's any stipulations for how we name this, but, uh, we're gonna need a name for it. Um, I've, I've got here two points, a three member board, well, actually it's a five member, and, um, after I print all these, I thought, oh, no. Maybe that because, um...
They'll prove your point.
But, uh, we're in a house, and we will surely get in, um, as part of people that we think that are, uh, to be on that board, or out of, um...
It should be a cross-functional meeting.
Yes, yes.
But people that, that have fire knowledge, people that are knowledgeable, they have any access, but, you know, may have not the right fire knowledge, or the qualified, but, you know, one is the responsibility or, or experience.
If you get the questions answered, um.
You want to part it because that's how you're going to get the signature.
Yeah.
I I think the key should, he over here gives him a pain in the right contract. He can start telling us, hey guys, here's what for there or else. And then like Bree and I had a conversation earlier today, I think that we can do some town hall meetings, like here's a town hall. Set up a couple of them, assuming you have written here, and the three entities here, honestly, uh unified. I mean, we need to unify, but this is, this is what we all know is going to benefit our residents.
We need to have a meeting at Starlight too, so I don't know what people are first thinking, kind of driving us along. They need to be a part of it.
It's firehouse.
Yep.
I think we have more than one.
More of it's.
We should have a vision break sign, more people are there to understand if they may be written off. But I didn't know if we had the ability for the fire department, fire department to like build a ball game, I'd accept their work too. If we can sit out front and ball at the ball games and have a little best and kind of talk to our residents. But I think our goal is understood is we need five hundred signatures, right? And that's five hundred.
Yeah, that's a guess, we don't know.
We don't know until everything gets.
That's.
About five hundred and it's household, it's not voting people, it's households, he said. And so when you've got two or three voters in the household only, that's the auditor.
Sort that out.
Yeah, the auditor helps you out with that, but basically, what do you count? Do you count all parcels, do you count parts, you know, uh, so then you have to, the auditor buys tax, you help you determine what counts.
Yeah, but and he's, he's obtaining that list from the auditor, like, I think, yeah, he doesn't have it yet, but Danny was aware of it. That well, he also has a lot of information, so. So it was a, it's two, and and that list will be well defined on who can sign, who can't. Uh, each landowner, one signature of that household, unless they have multiple properties, but both their names on it, then both of them are defined. That type of thing, yeah, but that'll all be spelled out.
Which then also will help narrow down where the fires are going, who we give it to.
I think the fires are number one, just so everyone knows before anyone maybe, um, does anything involving just so.
Oh, absolutely, it's gotta go ahead and I agree, and that works, including town hall meetings, but, yeah.
So, um.
I'm sure we've used that formula suggestion a lot.
Well, I I asked that too, I asked that, uh, and there was a public meeting at. It was a public meeting at the, uh, the, I call it, I ask, in the, and, and what is that, the meeting, but it's, at the top of the bill. Um, I guess, is that on the series?
That's on the series.
That is on the series.
Yeah.
And, uh, so we could use that, you know, at the Starlight, um.
A lot of people.
A lot of people.
That's what. I think, I mean, if you're gonna have a public meeting like that, we want people to come in, certainly discuss it, we probably gotta have a some type of, too.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I would say that would be.
I would suggest having a person.
The township makes up more headcount than.
Right. I see a note on here, it says, less of twenty percent or five hundred, if you're looking at, I forget the exact number, but I believe. The entire township's less than two thousand households total in the whole, in the whole township. Twenty percent of two thousand, or not five hundred, yeah.
Well, it's forced in our favor, is, uh, you know.
Well, the flyer, um, we'll have, we'll see about security, that, uh, site John's. And, and here, where? In the, okay, town hall. How many people will this hold?
Eighty to a hundred.
Okay. Okay, and, um, they'll establish space for that and put that on the floor, so everyone knows there's an opportunity to do it for themselves. So.
I think some of those things are probably due by Ruben, or they're not. Or on the file of what dates and things to do.
Yeah.
Oh, his availability as well, as what we're at in the process.
Okay.
I think he can answer the question about returning annual accounting in the process.
Yeah, I just.
I'm assuming that there's some oversight, I think, that's the other thing he said he provides, right?
Right, yeah.
He leads them, and I'm assuming somewhat from legal, but somewhat from accounting standpoint.
Yeah.
He's not a attorney, but I mean, he helps them navigate the process on an annual basis.
Right, I thought he was, uh, pretty much already saying, but, uh, it's one of those things that. I'd rather ask now than, you know, have it hit.
Oh.
So.
I don't know what it is, it's against the, the five years, it's against the, uh, the, uh. So we just keep it up with the, the county. You know, especially the board, what I'm starting to say, like, um, you, um.
This is the board, or is that the attorney?
Well, this is going to select recently, and that's attorney board.
Board is always saying.
Okay, if you put out.
I don't think we do, we don't have the representative, uh, to do it. A lot of more cases, uh, is, uh.
Well, yeah, I mean, that, it was, we've had, like, right, a couple of letters in the past, but, but we don't have a set.
Same time, that whole time.
I don't think it'd be one of the boards established, they, they can hardly, oh, can't hardly.
That's kind of wrong, yeah.
What's that, I don't think you, uh, but we don't wanna, we don't wanna, yeah. We will then make, yeah, we want to make, they're going to make that selection once it's created.
Exactly, stay out of it, yeah, stay out of it.
That's right.
So, say we, we just kind of, we're trying to go through the, we want a five member board, where you and I talked, we need a three member board, so. The town with a point one, the township with a point one, the fire chief with a point one, that's kind of what she looked at, for three, right?
My, we would point it, is your kind of, that you would adjust.
What, what, we'll, we'll just like, uh.
Did you, did you go recommend any for the commissioner?
So, and then with commissioners and county council, they go to.
The county council doesn't have an appointment, you know, we just, it's kind of, just county commission, they're only two members, probably just two appointments.
If we got four, then we get two members for a point. You can.
Well, I, I think people have their eyes, yeah.
And so, taking account too, the commissioners are also good for people, they're, they don't really, uh, you know, uh, in the process. Like, again, it's like, and then both of them, like, we make the process, and then it's like, it's working so easy. And, so, I think, and we don't know, how, uh.
You got two appointments on like, the board track out of the water.
Exactly.
The town has three appointments, Washington County has two appointments.
And so, so two different boards are set up different, so it's very divided, it's like, uh, the main board, they're, uh, in terms of, uh. Where you just have state statute and population, uh, you know, always in a, like, any commission, but.
Which.
And then maybe you've been told about it, it's because this district is a major taxing unit, which involves the commissioners. But, um, three commissioners, and one, they're, so, so it's a natural.
It also means that not all appointees would possibly live within the party district or.
Yeah, although they have that, that's, that's a requirement.
You'll have appointees from outside this tax, this package, this, this.
It's a lot of reason that I come to that.
Well, they have to be within the package.
They have to be within.
Oh, they do have to be within, within that.
Yeah, and I think you were saying something.
I was thinking it was opposite, I thought already, yeah, so it is.
I think with, with Ukraine.
I was thinking it was opposite.
Five districts, that, those people that are on that board must be within that five, I know that much.
They must live within that fire district.
They can't be a current member of the fire department.
Even volunteer?
No, not a volunteer. Could be an ex-volunteer, or a retired volunteer, because they're not, they, they don't come out there because they're, uh, they're, uh, district. Pointing their own person, uh, actually, hard, what the district does, it's hard, a fire department.
Mm-hmm.
Part of it, if that comes back to it. The way fires, which is, is real, so, oh, I, I know you're weird, uh, uh, so and so, yeah, he's on fire, he's in the world, so.
What is the name of the youth fire department?
The.
Fire department.
Yes, it was.
The youth fire department, it's original.
This department could work down to a fire department, too, would be.
Higher district, you know, uh, uh, it'd be, uh.
Oh, no, but it could, yeah.
It could be more, this is a guess, man, hey, I'm just here to have some respect, and I'm, um, got some, okay.
We don't want to change all the signs around here, it's more going down.
That's true, you, you say a little bit more.
That's, that's why, yeah, that's right, because if you didn't, if you didn't term, if you call us the board in Woodtown, get fire district, then that's where the people.
I, and I don't think there's any inclination or desire to change it from that, so.
So what?
We're, we're good with the name, so.
Okay.
I just, I thought it's the board, it's on the fire department.
Board, it's on, it's on, it's on.
Oh, okay.
And that's the fire department, exactly.
Well, yeah, that, yeah.
But I mean, this is, but, but, but BWT, VFD is on everything down there, so. You don't have to relayer every truck.
You don't have to relayer, it's, it's, they're there on, departments, you know, starts with a D.
Yeah, district department, yes.
Well, that's something that board, it figure out later down the road, they don't like it.
Hey, I don't have to, you all know, you know, this was approached, you know, about.
Yes, I know that.
Yeah, about twenty five years ago. Yeah, well, when I took office, in two thousand thirteen, I mean.
Before that.
On January, yeah, I know, we talked about forever, I know in twenty thirteen, in January, I got a call, and the fire chief was kind of saying, hey, we need this money. We want more fire, so I can't give them a general idea of what you have to do, and that was the end of that conference, because Paul, was Mark, was Mark. I remember talking to Paul.
They came up with Paul back in, when I was on there, that's been a long time.
Before that, but the big push was.
Well, you know, too bad, too bad, he's not here anymore.
So, I guess, well, here, it was brought up, but never, it never progressed into anything other than conversation.
It's kind of like a.
Well, everything is, well, it's too much trouble, so somebody's got to start somewhere.
Well, anything worth doing is nice.
Go back to, way out in my, uh. Uh, the fire department, what's it, what's.
No way.
You don't know.
Schedule. We need to start smelling it.
So.
What, what, what's, what's your first step? First step is, I guess, to really approve it, make sure we're on the same board, we're on the same page here, and then we're also, truly outlining who's doing the more. You know, if we're going to get signatures, we have to be three, or do these events, I mean, I, I hate to put you on some fire department, but people. Are probably more apt to decide things from a fireman standing there versus a town council or township person standing there, quite frankly. But I'm gonna tell the fire department guys, sorry, we're not, we're not, we're not interested.
We don't want to support you.
Nobody's gonna say that.
It, I mean, I guess, and, and I kind of agree with that because it almost shows, you know, it's, we're trying to set it up so our guys are paid right now, instead of just volunteering, so. So, I agree with that, they don't want to put all the fire department either.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure it would be. We, we've kind of kicked around the conversation, I'm not sure it would be anyone currently on the fire department taking this position.
Understood.
That, that might, might be one of them, but, uh, it's still. I don't look at it as a, as a, to get the firemen paid, it's more of a, you know, still got to put it back to a benefit to the.
It is absolutely a benefit to the company, but I think people associate volunteering slash paying department a little differently than. The benefits that they're receiving from, you know, paying more money at a time. And, uh, again, I understand, you know, again, the thing, if the firefighters are in favor of it, and of course, if they're not, I mean. Well, they surely want the support handed to that.
And the fire department guys don't sign this, you know, or, 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 pick them from there.
Well, the, the, the departments are, you know, sort of, sort of, sort of, permanent, so.
And that's the big, that's a big support, so I think that'll help us move this forward, or, at least for everybody.
Well, I think what we have to drive home is information, that the response times for EMS, the response times for the fire. And the paid firemen count a hell into that, but it's, it's what's the benefit to the community.
It absolutely is a factor, it's cost.
It's a real, you know.
That's what, that is what everybody's paying for, it, it's not so much that guy making a salary, or that guy making.
Right, it's, it's the service.
Yeah, but within a smaller community, you also got to make sure that people understand that it's, it's a change. Because there's, there could be people out there that say, well, it works great the way it is, we get services we need it, we don't have to let them. And you, so you're gonna, you're gonna play devil's advocate with other, I mean, people, you're gonna have naysayers, and you're gonna have people that want it, and you gotta watch both of them.
Well, it's force and draw.
And you, I'm on to you, but I can only learn the key question, and you draw by us, how do you require?
All right, you're right, you're gonna see that coming, when that new business is just, you're going to come in, and that's gonna be one of their first questions, how do you require?
The real estate agent now is giving the permission to do that all of it, and you can't, you can't, if you need to find your product. You know, it's a, it's actually, well, it's, I mean, you know, you know, that, that there is, that's, and how well that is, you know. Right now, you can say, you get a product, that's.
And it's not going to knock anybody out that wants to be a volunteer fireman, but they're plenty of missions, but.
Absolutely, well, hopefully, it'll, it'll be actually reviewed a little. I think once you show a period of developing, uh, and, and you see some pay, and then people maybe have the ambition to work for that future. You know, they're gonna be more active in there, yeah, so, um, should be good appreciation.
I think there's, there's a, um, push on, on, or in the, to get somebody doing that. Because all of our people were, except for Sam Paul, and our attorney's fish, and Paul can't hardly do it anymore, and Sam probably needs to be doing it, so.
Is that the, is that the five?
The, uh, the, 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 it's the only people we have around here during the day, and it's still gonna be the same non-paid people. I'm the only one that makes runs tonight, and, because I'm the only first responder that we have that's. Willing to do it, I guess, because that's, that's done by never see, but Sam gets up sometimes if he thinks I'm gonna need help, he'll make a run with me at night, but. It's, that's not gonna change from, from what we're doing here, you know, unless.
But it's, it's from his job for people to do more, or get more people involved.
Well, it's gonna have to get more people involved, too, I don't think the ones who are doing it now is gonna change.
Well, I think part of that is because of the people that, I just thought, the people that's running the fire department, and not running enough people off, have a really good fire department.
I don't disagree with that, but I will, we'll leave it at that.
I agree with Steve, I think, I think having the. It'll be a, it'll be a, a long, long-term recruiting tool for not only volunteer fire department, but also.
But how do we, do we, uh, to expand that, do we. Plan or, and or budget for that now? Because as, as of right now, the idea is just to have like two people on duty, just an eight-hour shift during the day. But do we want to expand that right off the bat, or, because that's gonna drastically change the budget amount that we're looking for. Uh, with, because, because they're gonna, you know, you're gonna have to have a, a different insurance, you know. Possibly even some kind of retirement added into that, you know, there's other, you know, vacations and stuff like that that's gonna come into play, you know, what happens when that.
And I think they just go back to the determined tax rate that we use, I, I mean, I would be under the personal, personal opinion that you would shoot hot to give yourself the funding.
Well, that's what Ruben keeps telling me, you know, shoot for the moon, you're gonna knock it down.
I agree, I agree.
I wouldn't go back to the well a second time, I'd make it high enough to where you.
That, I would, I would want to make sure you set the rate to where the, in the lifespan of that tax rate, you're not capping yourself. And then you're having to go back to, uh, that's my personal opinion, it's easier to swallow it raw.
Does anybody know what, like, Utica township, what, what's the township fire rate, I mean, just, for a heavy homeowner?
I always figured it was like ten bucks a month. How many?
At, at a Utica, yeah, at a point oh, at a point oh eight or a point oh nine, yeah, you're gonna be looking at like ten, twelve, twenty bucks. Uh, if you're shooting a, a twenty-two to a twenty-three, you're looking at sixty to seventy dollars, a hundred thousand, right? And that's what you're looking at, because it's based off property, it's based off property, right?
Based off a hundred thousand dollars.
So a hundred and a hundred and fifty dollars per homeowner would be a pretty good rate, would be plenty of money.
Yeah, a hundred, yeah, so, yes, basically, you, you say average two hundred thousand dollar homes in our area, a hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Right.
And that's where you get the rate there, that's a, that's a, yeah.
Yeah, for a hundred, yeah.
A hundred and twenty thousand, now, the average home unit that is pushing five or six hundred.
Well, as we grow here, and as it gets, that's gonna go up. Again, if, if you're setting it, you know, at that hundred and fifty, it is, more houses get built, you're already set at that tax rate. Yes, it's gonna hurt some people, but, you know, and obviously, that's based off of four hundred thousand of property, but it's less than a hundred thousand, it's less.
Well, that's a dozen passive copies.
It is, I mean, how many eighty-acre farms have recently been sold, you know, around Wilson, the Wilson Switch area? I don't think those were sold to become another eighty-acre farm, I would say that's probably.
Those homes, it's a little bit better, it's six hundred.
That's what I say, I mean, they're, they're turned into corporate acreage lots.
Wrong, man.
Yeah, and then you're.
We know we got fifty to sixty plans to write up here in the next year or two.
So, it's, I mean, that's just the beginning. Again, I think that conversation will likely have to prove, and I think all that, and W, as long as we're on the higher end of like taxes, it, it can be expanded quite quickly to cover. More than just a day shift, and then you're gonna be able to pull guys in for, for nights, and we can, we've got the available floors.
Now, the, uh, in, in the Star District, the board controls the fire department, but the internal command, they're on the same train, they're still controlled by fire chief, facilities, and all that stuff.
So they'll be the, um.
Yeah, day-to-day operations is still the same, the fire chief controls the fire department, he controls all his recruits.
Well, let's say a fireman has a complaint, they should go to the board, correct, yeah, that's what they've never had before, that's fine, so.
How many?
Sure, a lot of them, like, well.
Uh, some.
There's probably a couple of weeks, yeah, one to two weeks, so it's, it's.
Who, I don't know.
Two day, more than two day, I think.
Now, I remember a very common, we had one a day, you remember.
I think, it's always at two thirty, it doesn't matter what's going on, it's always at two thirty in the morning.
I think the average for here is about ten to fifteen a month, because that's, approximately, that's on an average, other twelve months, for, for ten to fifteen dollars.
Yeah, it's, it's a hundred to a hundred and twenty minutes a year, and eighty-five minutes per time, I'm not, I'm not.
I think you're gonna, I think right out of the gate, you're gonna be wanting to park an ambulance.
Well, then that adds a huge effect.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's gonna be figured into all of it, is the equipment as well.
And, uh, they park, they're totally located, in the, in the township, pretty close.
Yeah, I, I don't know, but, like, like you said, I, we could, I don't think we could do.
Not right out of the gate, no.
In the beginning, you could have a four.
There's no way we could do it right off the bat.
But having a first responder go to, oh, Paul, oh, Tom, they're great, they're, how many first responders do we have?
Better, current, trained, by, up to that, five. Me, Crystal, Ethan, Allison, Amber, Chris, six. We got firemen making medical life.
Yeah.
Well, that's. Say, you're not just sending them where medical.
Right, all I'm saying is guys that are firemen, who aren't trained medically, are making medical life, still.
That's, that's not, you know, and what's nice is to have a paramedic.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
We can't, we can take, now we need a paramedic, we got somebody to be called, we need a ride, and he's caught.
We do have. We do have Chris and Allison, which are both nurses, and Amber's a medic, so, if we can get them there, then, then we're, we're doing, doing better than two.
But even at that, I, I think, you, you, you got them all on the paid staff, so the response times are, are gonna be much, much less, because you've got to respond quickly. And not that you got them fast, it's, it could be, you could be, you know, a different county doing something, get called, but, uh, I think that's the, that's another part of it. It's all just a benefit for the community, it's all about.
Yeah, he, he knows, he knows, maybe not you.
I know, I believe in it, well, the, the truth is, schools expanding, and that, for people to have more, all the things are going to be, I believe, all that stuff is, they're growing, they're growing.
More headcount in schools, and get six more houses a year, and get a couple more developments that'll end up on Starlight, whether they like it or not. I mean, I think that there's some things that all of a sudden, you know, you're, it'll, it'll start rolling in there, because every added payer, if, if it's got a D, it's adding more money to the pile. So, they're gonna pay that tax rate, and all of a sudden, you're making this, because you had fifty homes for it, to pay that same rate, all of a sudden, you're making this.
Yeah, absolutely, uh, you know, we're basing it off of our current number, you know, future number, you're gonna, yeah, it's just natural progression.
But if you can only, pretty often, if you start off, if you can only, you know, distribution, two, three, two, three, five a year, you start to study the past time, and, but, you know, that's kind of all it. You know, my idea of the whole year, you may do it, but it's seven hundred bucks, so.
Well, but, but, Starlight, out of the entire Wood Township, you gotta look at, you know, other than Starlight, it's pretty divided up. There's still some big farms in Starlight, and Starlight's an old community, the people that don't want to run up there are down off, there's gonna be a lot, there's gonna be a lot of houses built.
You've already, we've already, you've already seen a lot of those big farms, splitting up books and splitting up, now they split into large parcels, uh, but, but you still add five, half millions, uh, eight hundred thousand dollar homes.
Look at all of the English farm effect, you know.
How the hell is wrong with that? Yeah, it's a great, you know, the, 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 the pin, the pin place, I don't think they do that there, they split out.
This is happening in real deal, which helped during the time.
Again, and we're saying, you know, seventy, seventy-five dollars a hundred, for a hundred thousand, you know, they're bringing, you know, they're building.
Those are gonna be seven, eight. Five, six, seven, eight, a hundred thousand.
Yeah, you know, so you're, you're all of a sudden, you're really raising your rates quite quickly, just off of a. Yeah, you know, so you're, you're all of a sudden, you're really raising your rates quite quickly, just off of a handful of more towns.
I mean, these homes both start at fifty, fifty, if you have down here, it goes up from there.
Fifty, five hundred. It's about two, you can build a house.
That's a pretty good.
Yeah, well, you can't build a house, no, you can't build a four hundred square foot house for, um, you can't live there. You can't do it.
Question, what does Stevens, um, mind it, so he would, they pay the four hundred, uh, five, because they're.
Yeah, yeah.
What do they pay?
I don't know what they pay, but they, they base the contract.
But it's, their, their contract.
What about MS as well, don't they have contracts for Ingle Farms too?
Well, well, they have an, well, whatever it is, they have their own.
Right, part of that.
And that, that, I don't believe they, I don't believe they pay them, it's just that they have a contract to, for them to cover.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, uh, like the counties.
Well, that would be like the agreement you have here, we, we've always had with other fire departments.
Yeah, mutual aid.
Mutual aid type thing.
Bree, you've been on the fire department?
For years, I don't know.
You've been on the fire department?
I was the first, uh, state and nationally certified trainer on the fire department.
And a lot.
Well, me and my brother, Troy was one of them, cause we went to the school together. And it worked, uh, I'm not really that good.
Do we wanna make a motion to move forward with contracting Ruben to prevent the fire district?
I'm not sure how we vote that.
I'm not sure how we vote any. I, I don't know how, yeah, be able to.
He just told me he needed a, a written, something written statement from each entity, saying.
Brian wants you to make a motion, we'll all second vote.
Well, we have to, I mean, this would have to go through our, our town council meeting.
Oh, we do the town vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, like we done during the whole, call me.
Right, it'd be a joint, I just want to seem like a, a joint regulation, right, right.
Yeah, I, I know all the guys that they, they've been, they've been wanting to vote, like, how many do you think will actually physically help walk this through? You think you gotta get enough people to help?
Ten or twelve.
Well, that's great.
That's better than others. Okay. And again, I, I, if we leave this room, and we're not unified, and not unified in front of our, our residents, taxpayers, and do ourselves, and, uh, it has to be unified, on this, work together. What we can do, but I think we all agree, is the whole front of this, if somebody says no to the fire.
I think that's it, I think that's it.
Yeah.
There's always one.
Um, then we have our meetings at St. John's, and then down here, um, I think it's important that someone from board, and someone from the township, and there's some, someone from the fire department.
Yeah, you want, it might not even just, boy, you want to be represented, you get, if you can get everybody to show up on that day, that just, I, I mean, like I said, it shows unity, it shows that we're all in agreeance, this is what needs to happen.
Right.
From the, from the township side, and the town, to the fire department, current, existing fire department. So, I think it's, it's, once those arrive, we'll make sure as many of us can show up as possible.
Well, and Ruben would probably run those meetings.
Absolutely.
And then I think we all have to be ready, starting to be first Q and A before I.
Absolutely, if you know the questions, they're gonna come.
Yeah, they're gonna come, and it makes sense, hell, why are you doing this township, why are you doing this, are you really bored of us, you being strong arms, you know, so those things will have to be flat out, and then be.
Well, and how many people know that board is, is, uh, on the verge of, 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 of your major subdivision, you know, how many people know that? And.
I think just getting, I think even now, I mean, I think we could start now, it's just, just people you know, people you run into, just bring it up in a casual conversation. It doesn't have to be so official, tied, just get the word out, you know, let people know that this is what everybody's talking about, and this is what we're thinking. I mean, I don't think we have to wait for an official mail flyer, flyer, or Ruben to tell us to go, I think it's just who you know, that's how you get the word out.
I don't want the word to get out there, the reason why they're doing this, is the cost of town, cut it on their fire department budget, and they don't, they don't have any money, and the trustee won't give us any money.
But as long as we're all in agreeance, and we all know that's not the reason, so it's, but that's where, as long as we're out, you know, I don't think anybody here feels that way, I don't think.
No, we don't, we don't.
Uh, so, it, it is, and that's sort of some of it. So that, that's, but again, it just takes getting up front, again, the easiest way to start with the friends that you have. And then, you know, get your friends to buy in on it, and then let them go out and spread the word a little bit.
We got more brands for them, I don't, I don't know about that one.
Hopefully that one will hold.
You gotta be careful with this, uh, if you don't have any, you definitely.
Absolutely.
Cause there's gonna be public areas, I, I, it's gonna be a public.
I think getting the word out before it is gonna be better than waiting for a public hearing, they just smacking people in the face, um.
Exactly.
That, that is gonna be.
What's in it for me, what's in it for me?
I thought it said, what's in it for you, is safety and security of fire, and. That's, that's about it.
Yeah, I know, I mean, to me, that's not a hard sell.
That's what's real.
That's, that's not a hard sell.
But it's, I mean, it's.
I would tell people that, as they, they come in, yeah, to be that free, but, you know, you gotta, uh, you know, I have to pick up on yourself, guy, you know.
And that's a true second. That's true, that's true.
And what a, like, let me ask you this, what a, a business, for example, like K W, that has more hazards than the normal, if they did a different rate, it's all the same rate.
It's all the same rate.
It's all somewhere, it's just their A B is like this, compared to.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, because your success rate goes up to your rate.
Right.
So, that's how I thought that. See, the pie's only so big. You don't sell many bikes, uh.
We need thirty-five, that's what it is.
Yeah, 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 pump, pump them high and high, you know, it's, it's, it's always there, that's it. I have to tell you, honestly, it's coming to a town, like, you know, what Mr. Brown, uh, Governor Brown has done, you know, I mean, it's prepared by, you know, from the, uh, uh, the, the, well, how, how you do it, however, it's, uh. As you play, a third left party passes, they're two workers. And somebody with a hundred, they're like, I'm sending him there anymore.
They're all the.
We got a firm, they're just on a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to, to figure that out for us, and they still, they're not sure.
And they'll, they'll put out twenty-seven, eighty dollars, I don't know, but, hell, they know, but.
Yeah, well, we know, the first year is gonna be so bad, the camp, but the second, third year, twenty-seven, ninety-eight, that's something that'll be a bit higher. The first year, maybe we have to go. But even if they ask you to operate on the same budget, it's gonna end up, you expect it to extend, it's gonna cost us.
You're probably more ready.
Yeah, it's your place. Yeah, so, the best, the best part is we're gonna get it back. And that's initial, that's, you have to give them great conditions to go.
Yeah, I think, and I think once we get Ruben rolling on it, I think we'll have to call, we'll meet again, listen, involved, just so we're all on the understanding of what he's doing. What our roles are within what he's doing.
So, so, if he didn't get in the contract, it definitely.
Sounds like, yeah, he definitely, yeah, definitely wanna get away from contract, I think we're gonna do a page.
And I, I did ask him to prepare, um, a contract, August twenty fifth. Um, I'm really, maybe I just need to call him.
Has he been on vacation?
I don't know.
And then who's that contract with, I guess, is that contract with all three entities, is it with the township, is it with the town, with two entities?
I think it falls throughout the whole.
Yeah, who's gonna sign the contract, I guess, all three?
And I don't, I don't know, and does he, does he actually run on contracts, I, I don't know what, I don't know how he sets it up.
Okay, he said that, yeah.
I mean, you can have a contract that's dispersed most three entities, and that's not, I heard of it. You need a lot, I need a lot of signature from each entity to approve.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask him that, and then I'm wondering with what, uh, the township has in two five, and the five five, how all that translates, or, you know, makes the week over and be with fire department, so that.
Press question for who.
Well, that dad was asked that question, and he said it would transfer. It's just a, yeah, sign it over.
Yeah.
It just goes straight to the fire pole, and we still.
It'll go to the fire district, yeah.
Yeah, it'll go, yeah, go to the fire district, you go by the.
The fire district now will handle that money and distribute it to the fire department.
Well, I think like you said, all the deeds and titles and everything, it all is on, it all goes with, with township, because I believe you hold those, the county holds those.
I, I was shocked to find that.
Yeah, hold those, and transfer those fire districts, so the transfer of all assets.
Goes, yeah.
Real, and monetary, but we tried to figure that out before, but, because trucks being bought, either, you know, through the township or the fire department, and the names are, it's, it's all screwed up. So as long, if it goes all to one entity, that's great, that way we'll know who the hell it belongs.
That's what you just wanted to do.
I think that's.
They're getting ready to transfer trucks out of, uh, our, our town control to, to. I think that's, I mean, go up there, unite, they had their own house, and all they had is, and, I mean, zero, nothing else was there. They, they just care. They don't have to do anything else, but, uh, so, you know, now, where they're gonna be, you, you fire, they're free, they're, they're five, they're, they're, and then, maybe they'll, uh, uh, contract them with, along with.
So all wood townships, vehicles and everything, the fire trucks and everything that they own, it'll just be transferred?
Everything, everything will go to the board.
Is there a board?
Yeah, it would, yeah.
Fire district?
Yeah, the town, or nowhere the township would control any asset.
Right.
As far as, first, anything, they would control zero.
Or be responsible, I said, types of entities created.
Yeah, it's, it's totally separate of everything, purchases all go through the board, any, any fire related items would go through the district, not any.
Yeah, I was just meaning like, what, what township owns right now, would they buy it from it, or would they just transfer?
Automatically give them.
Is taxes paid for any of them?
Yeah, I don't think it's a sell to something standard.
Well, there should be all that for his purposes anyway.
You should be able to invest in insurance, and capable of, you know, more responsibility, you know, pass up, man, it's.
And Ruben can help.
Everybody gets a problem, they have to, um, we.
I mean, we've got it.
Sixteen years.
We've got it in the.
You gotta need to go, go back, boy, that, that, they have a number of companies, and it's pretty.
Well, yeah, the, way on this, that's, uh, very confusing.
Yeah, that's, uh, we would buy something, we don't have.
Well, I think, I think focus, but that's, I don't know.
I think they're in the book, and they're in the book. Oh, yeah, that, that's a really good question.
So, I guess, next question would be, who's gonna draft up the resolution, cause the resolution needs to look the same between the town and the township, and it basically needs to be the same resolution, just a different thing.
Well, I think, like, that's a returning question.
We're gonna do that, I mean, Brenna's been drafting our resolution, and usually if we got questions, then.
And then your time is broken, it's really good.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, to draft up a, a resolution that is, obviously, it has to be the identical same resolution for both entities decide to actually proceed.
Then they make their own.
Yeah.
Well, they call it a joint resolution, I think we're doing that right now, it's a joint resolution.
Yeah, which takes both entities to decide, or the board becomes a.
The board knows the right town, part, and you're, that's important, that's, uh.
Well, I don't.
Do they need?
Is that critical, uh, uh, in your group, if you're talking to Ruben, just ask him, just how quick does he need that? Is that something? I think he's waiting on the town, cause I, I'm pretty sure, I. Well, not the resolution, he's waiting for the go-ahead. Well, right, yeah, he, he's waiting on the go-ahead, yeah, cause I think he had to have the go-ahead before he got the, you know, so that's holding everything up.
So, I would almost assume that that resolution would be the document he needs from both entities to proceed.
And the difference, I suppose, he doesn't have that level of. I don't, he doesn't need that level for the go-ahead. I didn't, but, but.
Well, we just, I believe that is our functional basis, to operate, right.
So he needs, like, a letter from you, to, to, to go ahead and write it.
He told me to email it, I did, so I, that's all he needs for us.
So, just for this, I think he just, a letter.
I know, really, the controlling entity is the township, the town has never controlled the fire department, we are on contract, that's it. You know, she controls, she owns it, she actually owns it. We, the town don't own nothing.
We trust, I'm gonna say that I own anything, the township is.
Township owns it.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm.
Yeah. You're sitting in.
Really, really taxpayer.
You're the one.
And really taxpayer.
The, the town's always been under contract, so the owners, the owner of the fire department, and all that assets, is the township.
Yeah, and then we look, so, so.
We make the resolution, and I really don't care, we're just going along with it.
Yeah, well, I'll ask, these are questions I'll.
Those are all through questions.
Yeah, I see.
Whatever he needs, if we can have it grabbed with fire chief, we'll do it, if we don't, we'll get it dropped.
I know what you're saying.
But that shouldn't stop.
But we're all, we're gonna do what I have to do.
I think, I think if we all are on it together, I think that shows more of the unity, it doesn't matter, you know, if you're looking at a resolution, if, if we all sign the same resolution. If somebody's looking at that, that shows that, that says the township's not stronger than the town, because that can be misconstrued.
But I just want you all to know, as, of course, cause I don't think you understood that in the beginning, that the township owns it all.
Yeah.
I don't think you all really knew that.
Again, ownership of.
I don't see that.
Ownership is within everybody, it pays taxes here, I mean, cause board is still with township.
Right.
So, but again, I think on a resolution, regardless of who owns it, or who controls the financials, majority of the financial streams, I think, in a unified effort, everybody needs to be on the resolution.
I agree with that.
For township.
Bree, if he simply needs a letter from the town, supporting this going ahead.
Sounds like email would suffice, from you and an email from our.
I think it's work from me, but there's emails.
Oh, I see.
So that sounds to me like a simple email from the two of you would go ahead and.
We get, we get it moving, they don't sit out in the way that much.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we, we need to get, we're, we're, we already lost them on the process.
Yeah. I don't know where, usually he's, and who knows, maybe he didn't get that, I'll take the ten, fifteen, yeah. Just last week, yeah, and we had.
Poor guy took it on vacation, I mean.
Well, listen, he could take a holiday.
Exactly, I mean, he could be sitting on a beach and not want to respond to you till he gets back.
We're not taking any problems.
I don't know, I'm calling, I'm.
I don't give a fuck.
Again, I, I think if, if, I think if Brian's already sent him an email and given acknowledgement, I think you can easily start with emails as an acknowledgement, and asking your email, that's enough for acknowledgement to get going on it. And you don't necessarily have to talk to him, per se, I think just give him, just a notification.
Well, who, who could not want to, you know, fish or whatever, if we, if we can kind of go ahead and go, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think, if, you know, if you, you know, if I'm right, I think we get an email sent out before anybody goes on vacation, at least, he's got it in his inbox, and it's not on our plate still, it's, it's in his, and, the notification, that's, that's not enough.
And what was it good with that, and all the, we ended up with this stuff.
Uh, um, I like getting into a, uh, it's something to talk about, I don't, I'll, you know, tomorrow.
Okay, all right, well, I, we have a sign, if we, whenever we write anything.
Okay, okay, I know, I know, it's.
And I think you got a copy of it.
Mm-huh. It's a, oh, yes, clear, that's right, yeah, yeah.
Well, I'll get, I'll get. Well, I'll get, I'll get the, we'll use this as a, the official copy, I'll get it back to Brenna, so when we're ready, we can, sign off on it, we can, I'll sign off on it.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the one where you guys will cover the grass, and we're gonna cover the eight thousand dollar fee to Ruben, right?
Yeah, so there's three things to see. Okay, okay.
We can't pass money otherwise, maybe, maybe, I see, I see no issue with that.
So, we appreciate it, and, we use that, because it's been, that, we didn't know it, because I thought the school kept the grass.
Mm-hmm, they just grew up your back door.
I know, I did not know that.
It's, it's an easy, it's an easy, so what I have in the body, it's, it's, yeah.
Little strip side, and then around the church, take them fifteen.
Well, it's like, that's what, our guys, paint the trees and stuff in the park for you, maybe park a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not gonna stop, stop, make you tense up now.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I think that's, uh, maybe, uh, again, too many.
Most people don't understand the difference between the town park and.
They don't, they really don't.
Now, I do hear a pause there, in here, between, someone calls it, they stop, it's, they, they're truck drivers, and they make a, a stop for lunch, they're going to leave, hard, so, and I said, you call it that. You'll, you, you'll, you'll be mad at me if, you know, something's not done right, or anything, they. So. What did you say, Ruby?
So somebody make a motion to.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'd second, that was probably, all favors, right?